We are now at our Matters by the Public and we are very happy to have you all here today. I have 12 cards in my hand, so that means we'll be here for the next 45 minutes listening to your comments. I would like to invite you to use both of the microphones so that we can go through this. And Carmen Sita Mitchell and Susan Kennedy, you are our first guests, and Commissioner Bernard will be calling the rest of you.
Do you want me to go first since she's not here yet?
You win.
That's what I meant, is like, she's not at her microphone yet. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, Commissioners. Thank you for your time today. My name's Susan Kennedy, I'm the President of the Jupiter Farms Environmental Council. We've been in existence for more than 20 years, fighting for the rural character and natural preservation of our surrounding properties up in the North County. Today, I'm asking for the Board of County Commissioners to support the Bush Wildlife Capital Campaign that they have for moving their facilities from their current location at Locksatchie River District in the town of Jupiter, out to their new campus on Rocky Pines in the Jupiter Farms community. As you know, the Palm Beach County Animal Care and Control no longer responds to injured and abandoned wildlife. They instead refer all of those calls to Bush Wildlife for that handling that's been happening since 2010. So that's probably millions of dollars that the county has saved in not funding animal care and control, but instead has been taken on by a nonprofit organization to take care of all of our injured and abandoned wildlife. We know that those responses, I mean, they get referred to Bush Wildlife within 30 seconds of calling ACC. And Bush Wildlife does respond 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So, we're here not asking for some sort of continuing support for Bush Wildlife, but we're asking for support to help them in their capital building campaign, so that we can make sure that wildlife is taken care of in the future, as well as in the past. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you so much. Carmen Sita?
Good afternoon, thank you Mayor Weinroth, Vice Mayor Weiss, County Administrators, uh, County Administrators, because there's more than one, right?
She worked so hard, we know there's more than one.
Yes, we were just talking. Commissioners and Madam Vedinia, thank you for letting me speak here today. Most of you know me, I'm Carmen Sita Mitchell, Chair of the Palm Tran Service Board. I've come here today, instead of bogging down the regular schedule during Matters of the Public, to report on the goings-on at Palm Tran. Mr. Forbes brought it to my attention that as part of BCC Resolution 2015-0893, that I should report to you on the happenings at Palm Tran. So here I am. I'm delighted to say to you that, for the first time on October 27th, we now have a full Board, thanks to your nominations, reappointments, and reappointments. So we're delighted. One of the things that took place at the October 27th meeting, we put our new members to work and we voted on service changes to take place January 2023. Among the most prominent of those changes is going to be to Route 1, which will now change and make the service more linear. It basically traverses Prosperity, and I'm gonna try to read this to you, but you all know with my vision. It's going north on Prosperity Road, but to continue on PGA and directly to the PGA Mall, ultimately making the route more productive to pick up more passengers. So we're really, really delighted about that change. And of course, Madam County Administrator was able to ride during the Dump the Pump with Mr. Forbes and Ambassador Nikki Brown. So we're really, really grateful. We also want to thank Commissioner Moreno and all of the Commissioners for their assistance. In addition, we want to thank you for ratifying the new ATU contract. This is, the labor negotiations went smooth, excuse me. And so we're delighted that our drivers will be receiving a more equitable pay, which is of course going to make the service more productive all around for all of us. And so we're really grateful for those negotiations and for the additional funding therein. To that end, Palm Tran held a career fair recently, which was quite successful. It resulted in many on-the-spot hires contingent upon, of course, the background check and so forth. So, again, we are really delighted with the changes and the moving ahead that Palm Tran is doing. Post the RPM, which, those of you who don't know, is the Route Performance Maximization Project, Strategic Planning, the TDP. We are, of course, the Connections Efficiency Project. We're looking forward to the continuation of these efforts with the upcoming Route Performance Maximization 2.0. In addition, we really want to thank the Commissioners for the Go Glades and its permanency now. Tammy Jackson Moore, who is our representative representing that region, is delighted to see how the service is helping her constituents, and so we remain eternally grateful to you. I cannot tell you enough, Madam County Administrator, how grateful those of us in the vision impaired community in particular are to have the enhanced service on fixed route, but also the holidays that we now have as part of Connection. I speak to people all the time on the fixed route bus who are delighted about these changes, the Paradise Pass, which will be celebrating its anniversary on Monday. And so, the things that are happening at Palm Tran are dynamic, and we are so grateful for your continued support. On a personal note, I just want to thank you all, you know, these are our elected officials, and for the Matters of the Public, all the Members of the Public. I see them with what little vision I have out here in the trenches every single day. I had the pleasure of seeing Mayor Weinroth last week at a charity event for Family Promise, to which I'm being courted for Board membership. Vice Mayor Weiss attended the Boys Town Summit recently, and we were delighted to have him there, also on the Board of Directors. And so, we are the recipients of the great work that you're doing within the community.
I gotta cut you off, Carmen Sita. I gave you an extra minute there because you were going real strong.
So, to that end, I will just say a sincere thank you on behalf of Palm Tran and its ridership for all the work you do.
We thank you so much. I see Clinton Forbes is here, and I know that you are gonna be promoting the fact that you're giving free rides on Election Day, and we thank you very much for that as well. Vice Mayor, would you call our next guest, please?
Yes, Matt Gitkin, and Matt will be followed by, looks like Scott.
Okay, you could tell us your last name when you get up here. All right, Matt.
Good afternoon, thank you very much for this opportunity. It wasn't too long ago that I was up here representing Jupiter Farms Residence Civic Association, when we were battling it out over these 19.4 acres, when it was supposed to be a soccer field. And, over a course of a two-year battle, we got that defeated, and now we are fortunate enough to welcome Bush Wildlife to that very same parcel of land. It's the only place to bring all species of the injured and orphaned native wildlife, which we are surrounded by in Jupiter Farms. The community, our community in Jupiter Farms, has in large part been trained to call the Sanctuary. Over the past 12 years since ACC stopped providing these services, not a day goes by that there's not a post on our Facebook page, online somewhere, where, "Hey, this happened over here, what do I do?" And everybody's response is, "Call Bush Wildlife." But it's 11 o'clock at night and this thing is suffering, call Bush Wildlife, they have an emergency number. Inevitably, across the board, neighbors are telling neighbors to call Bush Wildlife Sanctuary for the help that they need. Law enforcement, over the last 12 years, has turned to Bush Wildlife Sanctuary to help when animals pose a threat to people in the community, such as bears, alligators, coyotes, you know all of this, and the hundreds of other native species that the Sanctuary, you know, recognizes and helps and rescues every year. We ask for any support that the Palm Beach County Commissioners can give to Bush Wildlife's capital campaign. It's going to truly be a beautiful thing when this is done for North County and for the entire county. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments.
My name is Scott Zucker, I'm President of Audubon Everglades, which has been an organization in this county since 1966. I represent 2,500 local members. Like the Jupiter Farms Association, Audubon Everglades unequivocally believes Bush Wildlife Sanctuary deserves county funding to ensure the success of the Sanctuary's capital campaign to move to a larger complex. Our organizations share a similar mission, to educate and inspire people to conserve wildlife, especially birds, and the environment that supports them. And Bush Wildlife is the only organization in Palm Beach County to contact if someone finds an injured or orphaned wildlife. I personally have transported injured wading and seabirds on multiple occasions to the Sanctuary for treatment. The first bird that I transported to them was in 2014, on a late Easter Sunday afternoon. A starving young, beautiful, and pink Rosiette Spoonbill, which FWC lists among Florida's 59 imperiled species. Some other familiar Florida-listed imperiled species that are regularly seen in Palm Beach County and which Bush Wildlife has probably treated are such birds as woodstorks, tri-colored herons, osprey, little blue heron, snowy egrets, and the list goes on and on. According to the National Wildlife Foundation, about one-third of the nation's vertebrates, birds, and mammals are imperiled or vulnerable. The World Wildlife Foundation estimates North America has lost at least 20% of its animal population in the last 50 years, and a ornithology-led study estimates that we have lost 29% of our birds, or approximately 3 billion birds in that time. Bush Wildlife treated nearly 6,000 animals, representing 233 different species, last year. Animals and birds that otherwise would have just been added to the wildlife losses Palm Beach County, like the rest of America, has been experienced. The extraordinary work done by Bush Wildlife staff and volunteers to save the lives of imperiled animals and other animal species is invaluable. Can you imagine how many additional wild animals and birds Bush will be able to save each year in their new expanded facility? While there are other worthwhile Category B cultural grants, I urge you to please contribute the requested county funding to their capital campaign, so they can continue saving the lives of the wild animals and birds that we love, and which help make Palm Beach County such a wonderful place to live and visit. And by the way, the beautiful Rosiette Spoonbill I bought to Bush Wildlife eight years ago was treated and released, and since they can live up to 18 years in the wild, is probably still gracing our local wetlands and lakes for all of us to enjoy today. Thank you, Bush Wildlife, and thank you, Honorable Commissioners, for considering supporting the Bush Wildlife Capital Campaign.
Thank you so much for your comments.
We will have Jesse Walters, followed by Drew Martin.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Jesse Walters, I live at 2939 Hope Valley Street #306 in West Palm Beach. I came before you a month ago regarding the condition of the median on Jog Road between Okeechobee and Vista Parkway North. And Mr. Mayor, you kindly asked a staff person to get with me after I spoke, and he took all the information from me, but we're now into month number 15 with the median still unmoed, there's rebar, there's piles of dirt and trash.
Where's Mr. Rutter? Mr. Rutter will talk to you right after you sit down.
I'm persistent, I will come back in December, but thank you for listening to me.
Absolutely, Mr. Rutter will be right with you.
After Mr. Martin, we will hear from Ms. Linda Smith.
Hi, Drew Martin, happy day after Halloween. Hope you all survived.
It was a spooktacular day.
Excellent. I like your red tie, by the way. And Mr. Weiss has a nice blue tie, and you all look great, so, including Commissioner Sax with her nice peach. Is that a peach outfit? Good. So I'm here to say the same thing everybody else is saying, that Bush Wildlife is, you know, a tremendous organization, and I too have brought wildlife there, and they are so accommodating, so professional. I mean, I could go on for a half an hour, but I won't, because the mayor won't let me.
We're not going anywhere.
You know, they also have some animal displays, and it's very, it's a very pleasant setting. But I mean, they save the county a lot of money, because you don't have to deal with wildlife, and wildlife is an important part of our tourist dollars. People come here to see the birds, they come here to see all the different animals, and people enjoy animals, and they enjoy wild animals. But unfortunately, in urban environments, animals can be hit by cars, they can have, we had a situation where we took a fox there that had been hit by a car. We took some doves there, and not as exciting as the Rosiette Spoonbill, but they don't turn anybody away, and of course, we made a donation when we did that. But, this capital fund is so important, and it really is just a common sense, dollar cents decision for you, because as other speakers have said, they're handling this, so your animal control does not need to handle this, because when you have injured wildlife, again, it can be a danger to the public as well, and someone needs to be able to take that wildlife, and people are concerned. I know that in many of the developments, the first thing people say is, "It's gonna impact the wildlife in my neighborhood." And of course, I'm sure when they get out the bulldozers, some of those wildlife are injured, and then Bush Wildlife takes them in. But, it's such an asset to the county, so I just really hope you will help them with their capital fund, and it's just something that really makes sense. Dollar sense, common sense. In the last 40 seconds, I just want to talk a little bit about plastics, single-use plastic. We were disappointed when the County Commission would not take action, and I'm disappointed when I go to county offices and I don't see much recycling going on. I don't see paper recycling, and that concerns me, you know. When I go to a county location, I think you should be, I think there should be recycling. I really think plastic, we should, the county should be doing everything it can to discourage single-use plastic. I know the county is not using styrofoam, but again, I hope you will continue to work on that as a goal.
Mr. Martin, I'm going to allay your fears and tell you there is recycling, we do have recycle bins, our staff does recycle, and as you know, we do waste to energy, so that which is put into the garbage does not go into a landfill.
Well, this is what I think of waste to energy. I think it's a bad idea, so, I know, I know I'm not gonna try to convince you, but waste to energy is wasted energy, and nothing, we should be zero waste, and we shouldn't be burning waste, it's not good for the environment.
We'll agree to disagree.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Martin. It's always great to have you here.
After Ms. Smith, we will hear from Ms. Lisa Carroll.
Linda, you are on.
Okay, Linda Smith, Jupiter, Florida. Three minutes, so little time, so much to talk about. First, Bush Wildlife Sanctuary has come to Palm Beach County for capital expenditure funding. During their 30 years, they have hosted over 2 million guests at no charge. What other facility does that in Palm Beach County? As folks have said before, they rescue and rehabilitate native and keystone species. I have made my personal donation, and the Sierra Club Locksahatchee Group is in the process of making a $1,000 donation as well. Yes, I am trying to shamelessly shame you in opening Palm Beach County's wallets. Number two, electric charging stations. I'm sorry I missed the meeting last Thursday on EVs, I actually left a message to see if I could watch that. It was timely, since Palm Beach Post ran an article that same day, "Renters With EVs Face Dilemmas on Charging." We all know the economic and social and environmental costs of charging electric vehicles. The costs are much less for charging an electric vehicle than a combustion engine. Please install accessible charging stations on existing light poles, which is much less expensive than running new electrical conduit to charging stations. Amend the building codes to require running conduit. The housing bond money is coming, make it a requirement when receiving bond money to not only install the conduit, but the weatherproof charging stations. Utilize 110 outlets if you have to in parking garages. I am still reviewing, so I'm not gonna give you a copy of these, but I'm gonna give you a copy of the rest of this stuff. Florida's Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Deployment Plan, an FDOT partner and public management plan. Let's not be putting chargers where the state is already going to be putting them. Back to the housing bond, if the TV ad is correct, $200 million to build 20,000 homes, so we're paying developers $10,000 to build what they already were supposed to build, and I'm gonna leave an article for that. Renewable energy in India estimates more than 50% of its electricity from renewables by 2030. That's only eight years away. What's Palm Beach County's estimate? And, reducing single-use plastic, that's high on my list as well. You have control over the vending machines on Palm Beach County properties. There are vendors that can give you all of what you want in an aluminum can. No additional charge. I don't think. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but there is a charge to plastic waste. And finally, I'm gonna close with, thank you for your work. We have got to do everything. It's too late to say one thing is better than the other. Thank you for your time.
Linda, just want to let you know that you can always watch our show online, they are available on the county website. County Administrator, did you want to bring up anything?
I would.
I may have to call to find out where that is. I have a hard time finding zoning on the website and all kinds of stuff.
Vice Mayor.
I just wanna, I wanna make sure we are getting factual information out there regarding the housing bond.
Yeah, and TV ads might not be right.
Don't always believe what you read in the newspaper, as they like to say.
Given, given.
So, with that, if we are, if the housing bond is approved, that money will be used in addition to build additional units that the requirements in the, above the requirements that folks are required to build for new development in the county. So that would be in addition, those dollars would go to. We've built, what we're at, about 3,000 units now that have either been built or are in process of being constructed in the county, in addition to the money where we receive from our state and federal partners, which puts a total of about 10,000 units that have been developed in Palm Beach County. So I think it's fair to say, you know, we are trying to do our part, and, but I think it's important that we get factual information as to the funds. That fund is going to be used in a revolving loan fund to help with gap financing to build the additional units. So these will be for new additional units, I shouldn't say new, but additional units that are required, because some of the money would be for rehabbing units that we'd otherwise lose. So, just want to be clear on that.
I appreciate the clarification, and probably everybody that watched the TV ad appreciates the clarification too, because that's not real clear.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, we always appreciate you coming on up.
And after Ms. Carroll, we will hear from Karen Yeoh Hu.
Great. Greetings Commissioners, and thank you for your time and your help today. My name is Lisa Carroll, I live at 448 Sonoma Isles Circle in Jupiter, and I am here to support the Bush Wildlife, probably you figured that out already, Bush Wildlife Sanctuary's your gift to their capital campaign. I am, I visited Bush Wildlife Sanctuary with friends and families over the last 20 years, and not only am I representing Bush Wildlife Sanctuary, but also the people that I live near in Sonoma Isles and in Jupiter Country Club. The reason is of the work that Bush Wildlife Sanctuary has done, this organization has done to help our community and our environment. Here are just a few of the ways that the Sanctuary has helped Palm Beach County. 27,000 is the number of schoolchildren that receive environmental education each year, and we are expecting a 48% increase next year. Over 1.9 million, those are the number of guests that have participated in Bush Wildlife's free education programs. 6,000 is the number of wildlife patients that have been rehabilitated in the last year, representing over 233 different species, and we anticipate a 25% increase in animals, actually have, we've received that in the last four fiscal years, 25% year-over-year. 3,660 invasive animals removed from the county since 2017. 750,000 is what it costs to rescue, rehabilitate, and release these animals each year. And since animal care and control was brought up earlier, I want to just speak to Bush Wildlife Sanctuary's relationship with animal care and control. They've had a great partnership over the years. We're proud that ACC has historically brought new officers to Bush Wildlife Sanctuary during their training, so they can see where injured and orphaned animals are taken care of. Officers from ACC bring animals to Bush Wildlife Sanctuary on and off the clock. And when it came to a point that the county could no longer provide these services, the Sanctuary was happy to help and continue the mission based on the strong relationship they have built with animal care and control. So back to my numbers, 20 acres is the new campus that will allow Bush Wildlife Sanctuary to double their capacity, educate thousands more children and families, treat more wildlife and increase capacity for their permanent residents, preserve over 500 native trees and five natural wetlands, feature a state-of-the-art animal rehabilitation center, and own their own property for the first time. With Bush Wildlife Sanctuary's move and expansions plans moving full speed ahead now, now, now is the time for Palm Beach County to help Bush Wildlife Sanctuary with a capital gift for their move and expansion. Again, I thank you for your time and your consideration and your help.
Thank you very much. This morning during our consent agenda, we had approved an item, which was $3.8 million for the Tourist Development Council Cultural Category B. And one of the grantees this morning was the Bush Wildlife Sanctuary, where we granted I realize this is not close to the numbers you're talking about here, but there's a finite amount of resources, and we try and spread them out as well as we can, and so we certainly are going to listen to your requests, but we also have to see the other requests that come in from various other sources as well. Vice Mayor?
Yes, after Ms. Hu, we will have, it looks like Sue Shirus. If I ruined your name, I apologize. Go ahead.
Karen Yeoh Hu, from 4230, that's their call number 207, Lake Worth, Florida, 33467, 1281 Yar Harbor Drive, Single Island, 33404, 9174, Keyandi Court, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33472. I own houses from, probably, from Boynton Beach to the north Palm Beach County, so probably all the Commissioners, I have jurisdiction. I think in my real estate taxes, and I pay sales taxes, so the Commissioners have money to disburse. And today, I come forward to request for, say, a study or about the property fraud, because Miami County, they have 10 inspectors at the Palm Beach County for inspection on the property fraud. That means stealing people's titles from their house. Broward County did the same, 10 inspectors, just go through it, and finding property fraud, like me, I report property fraud. But, when I go to the State Attorney's Office, I went to City Boynton Beach Office, I went to Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office, nobody wanted to take care of me. They had no understanding. They told me they don't understand, civil matter, civil matter. Over here, it says it's criminal matter. And, I thinking, proposing that if a county find that it's proper for the county to assign more money, appropriate more money to the property county office to remedy the property fraud cases. Like for me, I come forward, I cannot do anything, because all these cases that I'm involving in, it's too big for a little me to handle. I had to take it to FEROR Court, and the FEROR Court, through discovery, found that, yeah, it's property fraud cases, but what can they do? What can we do? So, I would say, we should start a tax force, task force, to study whether we need more money for investigating property fraud. I'm not poor, I'm not super rich, so I'm a median person. So what can the median person do? If it's people stealing my property, should I go to an attorney, spend $5,000, and he came back, say, "You don't have a case." Thank you, thank you, Honorable.
Thank you for your comments. I just want to point out that the Clerk of Courts has a program for property fraud, and they will give you alerts if some- and they will give you alerts if someone is trying to record something on your property. I would suggest that you go on to the site for the Clerk of Courts. Mr. Bruso has been focused on that, and there are steps being taken to protect your rights so that you don't find your property stolen from under you.
May I, may I respond to your question?
I'm going to ask you, we're going to move on, but I'm going to ask that perhaps we can have you reach out to the Clerk. I'm sure someone from the Clerk of Court is monitoring this, and perhaps if you wait around a few minutes, we're going to have someone come up from their department.
Thank you so much.
Oh, there we, see, we have someone right here at the.
Good. I have all the paperwork, I have all the evidence. That's what the court is about.
All right, why don't you come around to the side over here and address the Clerk of Courts representative?
Thank you so much.
And Commissioner Sax, did you want to say something?
As you walk in, I just want to say to the Clerk that Ashley Moody's office, Office of Attorney General, also has an office available to, that way she can combine with your office, and we can get this taken care of. It is a problem, and it is a crime, and it is something that we need to take care of. Thank you very much for coming again to us on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Sax.
And did I get your name right?
Close. Sue Shirous.
Shirous. Okay, after Sue Shirous, we will have Kay Gates.
I can speak. Okay, I'm Sue Shirous. The address is 6640 Eastview Drive, Lakewood, Florida. I'm a native Floridian, fourth generation. I have worked with wildlife rehabilitation for over 40 years. I started with the Wildlife Care Center down in Fort Lauderdale, moved up to Palm Beach County 35 years ago, where I became involved with the Ocean Impact Wildlife Center, as well as Bush Wildlife and the Bambi Bird and Wildlife Sanctuary. Many years ago, the County Commissioners did use to provide funding to the Bambi Bird and Wildlife Center when they were the only facility here in Palm Beach County. Now we have the Bush Wildlife Sanctuary. They're a unique sanctuary that helps teach our citizens how to coexist with wildlife. Every day, more and more space is being taken away, and if we don't have a place for the injured or orphaned animals to go, they will just die, or they will provide a safety issue to the public. Bush Wildlife has some very unique programs in place, not only for children, but for adults as well as the snowbirds that visit us here in Florida every winter. I ask that you please consider maybe this year, funding them, but also continuing to fund them as you did Bambi Bird and Wildlife Care Center many, many years ago. My husband is a lieutenant police officer with Lantana. We get calls all the time, mainly because we are on the waterways, pelicans and injured gulls. I pick them up, I drive them to Jupiter, there's nowhere else for them to go. So the police departments are involved, the citizens are involved, volunteers are involved, and this facility, I believe, is unique because of the many opportunities that it provides to the people of Palm Beach County. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
After Ms. Gates, we will have Sheila Calderon.
Thank you for being here and allowing us this opportunity, and as well as our County Administrator, who I don't acknowledge often enough. And I want to thank especially Commissioner McKinley for bringing up this, what do you call it, to support Bush Wildlife. I think it's a wonderful program to support. And I have a very special comment to support Bush Wildlife, but I really want to talk to you about Sierra Club. So I've been involved with Sierra Club for about 20 years, and we have two environmental, I know you think we only come here to yell at you about the poor decisions the county makes sometimes with giving developers too much, too much, period. But we do have some other things, other programs. Two of the programs, we have two community, we have two environmental education programs for youth throughout the county. These two programs are ICO, Inspiring Connections Outdoors, and we have a camp scholarship program initiated by a conservation chair way back in 2000, somebody that you guys don't know about. These two scholarship, these two environmental youth programs do a lot. We work with children that nobody else has taken to the park, nobody knows where to, nobody has time or the money to take these kids places. We take them to the beach, we take them overnight camping, we show them how to surf and, not surf, but how to snorkel. One of their favorite places to take the children is Bush Wildlife Sanctuary. And when we started our education, our camp scholarship program for children, we were thinking about, well, what camps are really environmentally sound that we want to support, would we send children to? And we asked the children of some of our Sierra Club members who had gone to camps, and we actually had one member whose kid had gone to every camp in Palm Beach County. So we said, "What's your favorite camp? What was the best experience?" By and by, by and far out of this world, her best experience was at Bush Wildlife Center. So we know that they're doing not only wonderful work to save and help wildlife here in the county, but they are also doing a wonderful education program for children. And I think they came up with some numbers about how many school groups go through there. But these are small groups of kids that we also take there. Last but not least, I would like to share, if I have a minute.
Actually, you have expired.
Okay, can I just mention Sierra? We get our fundraising.
I'll give you five more seconds just to mention what you want to mention.
Sierra Club does private fundraising for this. We sense most of you, I think, invitations, Thanksgiving celebration, November 12, 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. We have a very special awards program. We have awarded some of the County Commissioners as our environmental champions for this year. I do want to tell you that our.
I've got to cut you off. I've got to be fair to everybody else.
I would appreciate it if you would look up the flyer online.
Very good. Thank you so much. We appreciate your comments.
After Sheila Calderon, we will hear from Nikki Brown.
Good afternoon. It's a pleasure being here, and thank you for the opportunity to speak again for change. I am going to speak about Bush Wildlife, and it's funny because Kay Gates and I, and she said 20 years, we've been coming here more than 20 years. It's close to 25 years now, okay, that we've been appearing, all right? My hair was not this color when I started. Okay? At any rate, I am Sheila Calderon, and I live in Green Acres, Florida. And I just want to speak in support of the request for funding of the Bush Wildlife Sanctuary, and I want to make it sort of personal, okay? Is that over the years, I have taken friends and family to Bush Wildlife, and additionally, this was what Kay mentioned, and I have to continue it, because I ran this program for many years. It's called the Inspiring Connections Outdoors. We have taken children to Bush Wildlife for an education program there. There wasn't a time that I have been there myself with family and friends that we did not enjoy the experience there and are very thankful that there is this type of sanctuary here in Palm Beach County. They are a delight to be with and see what goes on there. Clearly, the sanctuary needs financial help, and I believe strongly that their endeavors and requests for funding should be considered as requested. And thank you for the dollars that you spoke about before, the tourism dollars you approved this morning. But Bush Wildlife Sanctuary is seeking support for the Capitol Campaign. That's two separate buckets, so please think about that when you are there. And as far as what I'm going to speak about very quickly, yes, I have another minute, is Sierra Club and two of the campaigns, and one of them that you will see on the program that, for our fundraiser. We are very, very proud of the fact that we are honoring this year as our environmental champions, the team that has been working from the Glades area on stopping the sugar burn. And I have asked you all this before. I know it's not necessarily your purview, but nevertheless, it's your communities that are being affected as far as their health is concerned, and therefore I think somehow you should be putting pressure where pressure needs to be to change it to green harvesting. There's no possible excuse for it except for the fact of the wealth of the sugar industry and the fact that they don't want to spare a penny of it. And that's very, very sad to me, when I know that there are people that are affected as far as their lungs and their health is concerned and are living in this type of environment for six to eight months a year, on top of the fact that we should be concerned about climate change because they are polluting. They're not just polluting the Glades when they're burning all of this.
Okay, your minute is up.
My time is up. Okay. Thank you so much. Have a good day.
Thank you so much.
After Nikki Brown, we will have our final speaker, Andre Morgan.
Mr. Brown, you are recognized.
Can you hear me? Nikki Brown, 5190, Breckenridge Place, Palm Beach. I'm glad to be back. I'd like you guys to know I just got back from surgery, had my bone marrow transplant, and I'm feeling well, I'm feeling great. And the good news is that I'm at 100% remission. I'd like to thank a lot of people, I'd like to thank Ms. Baker, because Ms. Baker was always there for me. I'd like to thank all the Commissioners, I would, and the Commissioners. Marino, we're going to miss you. I raved you.
I'm staying.
I know, I'm not going to come back. I'm looking at you, yeah, I'm talking about Marino. We're going to miss you. Great, great job you've done for the county. Appreciate it. And thank you very much, Sax, for, and Robert, don't forget, you're the mayor of Palm Beach County. I thank you.
At least for a couple more weeks.
Oh, yeah. And I got Mr. Forbes, I won't forget him back there, so. All right, so rundown is, I'd like to, first of all, I'd like to thank you guys for giving the operators and your budget you guys did, you gave them a raise, and they are very happy. All the bus drivers for Palm Beach are very happy, and appreciate the work you guys have done with them. And I haven't heard no more complaints. Now, I'd like to also ask if you guys could add more bus shelters. That's the only thing I'd like to, add more shelters in Palm Beach County. So if you guys can take that into account, I'd appreciate it. And before I go, I'd like to let Ms. Baker know that I just celebrated 20 years of clean and sober. I haven't picked up a drink in 20 years. And I'd like to thank, I have to say, I have to thank, I have to thank one person that really made that happen, and that was Judge Mary Elizabeth Lupo, who was a Palm Beach County. She's the judge that I talked about, she was a Serene Judge. She got, she got me to quit drinking. And she told me, "Well, you have two choices. You can do 15 years, or you can go ahead and take a treatment center." And I said, "Well, I'll take the treatment center." So, all right, so I'd like to thank you all, and thank you for letting me through. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Forbes, you heard that, we need more bus shelters. Okay, it's been heard.
And last speaker is Andre Morgan.
How you doing? How you doing? My name is Morgan, I'm the owner of Brighton Clear Soft and Pressure Washing. I am looking to reach out for help because the system that you have with the black minority business is not working. And I've been reaching out to procurement, I've been reaching out at events from Miami to Palm Beach. I have participated in so much, and still there's no help for the black minority businesses in this county. And it's even spoken inside some of your procurement buildings because a lot of people are trying to help others. And I think the system needs to be changed a little and not based on the friendship and the communication from other people to allow others to have the same opportunity. And that's one of my problems. And I'm just reaching out for help because it's getting worse with black businesses going to the county or asking the county or looking for help. You see other nationalities that's receiving the right information, the right contact, and I'm in the same situation. I'm AILC, I'm certified in my craft, I have referrals and references from fire stations and water plant utilities about my service. I have done everything imaginable, not just my work ethic and performance, because I have been a labor foreman for six years in Miami and Aventura. I'm here responsible for over 10, 15 buildings in Miami from structure in Aventura, one of the biggest contractors there, which is CarScan. So I took it upon myself to open my own business in which I thought the structure of black business had a better format, which it doesn't. It's no help nowhere, even like I say to people in the office, I complain in that, "Hey, Morgan, we reaching out, other people sending other jobs here. They sending jobs here when the jobs should be rotated and give others opportunities, not just those that's in power or in position." If I put an email in and I receive an email for $3,000, $4,000 a job, and the job come out for $6,000, $7,000, I should still receive an email, not be avoided. When I'm addressing my issues concerning my family and the growth of my business, I want to employ people as well, I should be paid attention to like everybody else, not overlooked, not pushed to the side, not talked disrespectful on the phone, why I'm calling and things of that nature, doesn't make sense. This is not a reach out to the public. This is not help. I have a wife and kids like everybody else in there. I have a family structure like everybody else in there, and this is what I love to do. My craft is what I love to do. So all I'm asking is just someone needs to take the time and opportunity to look into the standard of procurement and how these jobs are being given out, and who's receiving these jobs based on their experience and their work ethic, not just their friendship and who they know. It doesn't work that way. I see guys all the time on the side of the road that the job is not done properly, the house is not done properly. I'm certified in pressure washing, soft washing, sanitizing. I'm on the network, one of the biggest networks in the state of Florida, been cleaning Disney World for 30 years. These people are well-equipped on who they, who they teaching, how they teaching them, the information they passing on, the knowledge. They don't let you leave out of there without the proper knowledge.
I need to cut you off, you've gone past, but I want to tell you, we had this last week, a, what we called the Annual Business Matchmaker Conference, where we had a operation over at the Convention Center where we were offering guidance to people like you, minority business owners, on how you can get contracts. Why don't you, Todd, who can we, okay, Dorit Miller in the back there, she's going to give you some information that might be able to help you, because we certainly want to encourage you, and we certainly need your services. And so perhaps we can help you right now get some guidance.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for coming up here today. All right, I think we have consumed the time for our public matters by the public. Commissioner Marino, you have a final comment?
Well, actually, Bush Wildlife Sanctuary is in my district. I pledged $200 last week at the Hoedown in Jupiter, but I want to, I want to clarify a couple things. So I'm going to do a couple buts because there's some bad information out there, and then I'm going to do a couple asks. So please bear with me, and I'm going to actually read some notes because I, when staff texts us, you know, they hear what you're saying and they search for information, so I'll get texts. So one of the texts I got, you all comment about the fact that the county no longer helps, but apparently from what I have received from staff, Florida Fish and Wildlife is responsible for wildlife, and they certify four rehabilitation centers in Palm Beach County, one of which is Bush. We used to respond to injured wildlife back in 2009. However, we no longer have that responsibility. It was mandated that this responsibility is now Florida Fish and Wildlife. So when you keep saying, "But the county doesn't do it anymore," it's not, it's not some, it's, we're not mandated to do it. So, did I say that right, Verdina? Okay. Then we still do get over, you know, an abundance of calls every day, so, and it looks like about 400 daily calls require hours. about 400 daily calls require our field agents' attention. So I don't want you to think that the county isn't responding at all or, you know, we've chosen to ignore you. I don't want that, I don't want you to walk away thinking that. And I wanted to clarify that because, you know, I have heard that over and over that the county no longer does anything. So I wanted, I wanted to find out why, because you've given a date and I wanted to find out what that, why that was. So I just want to put it out there, it's a mandate that this is now taken over by Florida Fish and Wildlife. And I hope that you all have reached out to them for some support too, for some financial support. And I do want to also clarify the fact that, you know, the county set aside $4 million in funds and Verdina, you can help me with this because this was actually, you know, very early on when I took office. So we have put aside $4 million of funds that we will put an RFP out for those dollars, okay? She'll nod yes or no if I'm saying it incorrectly. And, you know, again, I'll make another reference, I made it earlier today, you know, we were at the, several of us were at the Hats Off Nonprofits Award the other day and found out that there are over 7,500 nonprofits in our community and everyone needs a hand. And I know that we, if we had a bigger pocketbook, we would, we would underwrite your capital campaign, but we have limited funds and if we give funds to you, that means we take funds away from someone else. So we have to share. So with that $4 million and with the RFP that will go out, we'll be happy to help whatever way we can within the amount of dollars that we have. I hope that, so I'm encouraging our staff to look favorably on Bush Wildlife and I know that.
Don't say that we've got to be objective.
And, yes, that's true. We have to be objective, you have to fill out the RFP, it has to qualify and all those good things, you get the right points and whatnot, so. But, you know, we all have a place in our hearts for Bush Wildlife, including myself, so, you know, we will help you in whatever way we can and I hope the people that are listening, you know, they can open their pocketbooks too. We've gotten a lot of letters from, from our constituents and from your board members and we appreciate all those letters. But again, and I hate, you know, when you say but, it's always such a negative thing. But again, we are limited in the amount of funds that we actually have and considering all of the need in the community, you know, we are limited in how much we can give to each agency. So I hope that helps, probably doesn't, but I just wanted you to have a clear picture of where we stand. And Verdina, if you want to add anything to that, I'm more than happy to.
This board did allocate the $4 million in culture. We just had a number of other number one priorities. We've got some of those off of our plate. I've met with Dave Lawrence, who is the executive director for the Cultural Council. He's going to handle that particular issue for us. We met just recently. We're finalizing what the criteria will be and then we'll handle it like we do our other grants, we'll put it out on the street. Again, it's only $4 million, it's not a lot of money, but we're going to try to be as fair as possible and spread those dollars around unless the board gives me some different direction. We've got quite a few nonprofits that are looking and waiting on those dollars to come out and they will be for capital purposes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner McKinley?
But the Cultural Council is handling that grant application and their board will be the ones that ultimately make the recommendations?
What normally occurs is that they handle grants for us, but their board does not make that determination. We have a review committee and it's made up of a number of folks and we have a representative from administration sit on that committee as well. We go through the criteria we've made, we determine what the criteria will be, the number of points per each requirement. Once it's all done, they'll make some recommendations, that committee, and we'll bring it to this board for approval. This board will make those approvals. We'll make that, recommendations will come out and the board of county commissioners ultimately approves it.
Okay, I think it was two weeks ago I brought this issue up under my comments and one of the directions that we gave to staff, while sometimes we might not be able to cut a check, there are other resources that the county can offer to assist Bush Wildlife. And one of those was to ask that our Legislative Affairs Department work closely, and I see Ed Chase back there, hopefully he'll have a new partner soon, working with him in that department, but to give them direction to work with you to come up with a legislative request. Now, we've got some of the best legislative team members in Tallahassee that are extremely successful in getting contributions, I mean appropriations. One just has to look at what happened with the Cox Science Center last year and what's happened in the past with Place of Hope. I mean, when we're all working together, oftentimes they end up getting more money than they've asked for originally and it's been very successful. So I'd like to, since that only happened two weeks ago, give it a little bit of time, but, you know, elections are next week and then the legislature will be meeting for reorganization on the 22nd. And I imagine our, I won't be here, but the commission will be voting on its legislative agenda shortly thereafter. So work with Mr. Chase in coming up with that appropriation request and see if we can get on board and join you in that. And then in light of the conversation today about Fish and Wildlife, what if the board wrote a letter to Fish and Wildlife and asked them to step up a little bit? If there's four organizations in this county that they are making referrals to, they should be giving a little bit of financial assistance to those four. So those would be operating dollars, but anything we can do to offset your operating dollars, you can use those savings for your capital campaign. So could we look at doing a letter to FWC?
I seen Mr. Chase making notes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, one last thing before we call it a day and of course, this is Commissioner McKinley's last Matters by the Public. Will be a lot of last things coming up, but I'm certainly going to miss you up here with us. If you are not aware of it, there's an election going on. It's too late to ask for a vote by mail to be mailed to you, but you can still go to the supervisor of elections and pick up your vote by mail or better yet, you can go to the supervisor elections and actually vote early. Voting early at 24 locations in this county continues through October 6th, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
November 6th.
November 6th. Who said that?
(laughing).
November 6th, okay. Please, if you are registered to vote, it's that time. And of course, November 8th is that day when everybody who has not voted early or voted by mail has that last opportunity until 7:00 p.m. on November 8th. So we hope that you will do that and make your selections accordingly. And with that, I think we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.